Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, December 15, 2021. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in the council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I am Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding. Also present are counselors Shannon Sherman, Deborah, Joel Espiro, John Darling, Kate McAllister, and Andy Groot. We will now rise for the pledge of allegiance.
One nation under God.
Before we proceed with our agenda this evening, I'd like to announce that amendments the agenda were proposed and posted yesterday as follows. Item 6D, Second Amendment to Lead Lock Lease has been removed and the following items have been added. 6F, Planning and Zoning Commission Appointments. 8B, Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation Grant. 8C, Idaho Resort Cities Lobbyist and an executive session. Because these amendments were made after the agenda was originally posted in less than 48 hours prior to the meeting, the amended agenda cannot become effective without a motion and vote of City Council. With that, I would entertain a motion and approve the amended agenda. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
They're moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Groot?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spurro?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darling?
Yes.
Okay, let the record reflect, the agenda has been amended. Now we will move on to announcements. Are there any announcements from council? Any announcements from staff?
No announcements this evening here.
Okay. We will now proceed with the public forum portion of the meeting this evening, which allows the public to address the council and myself on items either listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. Those here in chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a sign up form located in the front of the room by the door. And then you would hand that to the clerk right up here up front. If you're on Zoom and you wish to speak, please raise your hand. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Please do not direct any questions to council or myself or to staff and do not approach the dais. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual organization or business. And each speaker will be allowed three minutes and you will be notified by our clerk when you have 30 seconds remaining. Is there anyone who has signed up to speak, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. That concludes the public forum portion of the meeting this evening. Next is the consent calendar. I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize Kate Huesman and Tom Rigs for their work on the Planning and Zoning Commission over these last many years. Kate was actually on the commission when I first came onto the Planning and Zoning Committee in 2009. So her service for 13 years is truly remarkable. And she was a strong commissioner and inspiration to me those many years ago and remains to this day. And Tom has served for eight years as well and he has served the city well and we really appreciate both their service on the commission. Also, Jason Welker, who has served as chairman of the commission for the past year, will be stepping down to take his place on the dais as a newly elected city council member next month. So we congratulate him for that transition. Serving as Planning and Zoning Commissioner is a volunteer commitment and not an easy endeavor. The time and effort expended by all of these individuals is commendable and we thank them for their generous service to our community. And actually, I would like to initiate a round of applause for their service. So if we may. A total of 18 people responded to our, I think there's a misprint, I think we had more like 11, responded to our recent call for applications to fill the big shoes left by the outgoing commissioners with a multitude of highly qualified candidates. The decision as to who would fill these seats was challenging, but certainly a good problem to have. I sincerely appreciate each and every one of the applications received and the desire by each of those applicants to want to serve our community in this capacity. After conducting a number of interviews, I've chosen three candidates that I believe will nicely round out our commission and I would appreciate the council's confirmation of these appointments. And I just want to linger on that for a second. We've called for applications for Planning and Zoning Commission as well as numerous other commissions over the years. I've been six years as mayor here now. And never before have I seen anywhere near this number of applications and from very highly qualified candidates, many of them. So it was really a pleasure to have such a choice. And it was also a challenging decision to make, given such a highly qualified candidate. So we're really fortunate as a city to be well-served by a public that's really engaged and I'm really excited to see the public engaging the civic process. So and it's great to see all of you here today. And that's just another reflection of that. So moving on to the consent calendar, for the record, the total amount of bills is $1,072,280.20 for 347,061.4 cents for regular payables and $725,219.16 for payroll. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor? Yes. I would like to remove or at least table item 6F, the Commission Committee Board Appointments. The reason being is because we just had a council retreat about how can we move forward with policy, leaving a legacy, not only for the present, but also for the future, our children, our grandchildren. As the mayor alluded to, we've had 11 applications, maybe more, I'm not exactly sure of the number. And I think that, nothing against these people who are nominated at the moment, I just know that I received two applications myself from other members who applied and their resumes looked very good. And I'm not sure if we as a council, at least I didn't get the applications of all the members to see maybe that I could vet and maybe you guys received them, I am not sure. But I think it'd be important, as we've had concerns with housing affordability, zoning, et cetera. I think it'd be very important for the council to be able to vet as well to see the other opportunities that we might have. Nothing against these individuals, I respect anybody who's willing to put their application to run for any type of volunteer position or council or mayor. So I would like to table that to give an opportunity for us or myself to have more confidence and a decision for planning and zoning. It's no small feat, much respect to those people who run for that. So that's how I feel about it. We have a hard future, hard decisions to make. I think it'd be important that we're able to, for myself at least, to be able to look at all the applications before I can make a clear conscious decision.
So I'm going to ask for clarification there. I believe all of those applications are in your packet. Is there anything that's missing from the packet there in terms of commissioner applications, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, are you asking about all applications received or those on the agenda?
Okay, I believe I missed that. So I got the ones for the, well, I didn't see Mr. Hastings, but I saw Amelia, Luke, and Ben. So I guess to my point is the other applications I did receive, maybe I missed the other ones. They seem very qualified and I personally would like a little more time to vet them. And I believe some were possibly, not possibly, I believe more qualified than some of the ones here. So that's why I'd like to table it for the next meeting.
So you would like to table it because you'd like the opportunity to review the application some more? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second just for point of discussion.
Okay. So actually, I need further point of clarification. So are you making a motion to remove it or to table?
To table it.
To table.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, I believe what councilman would do here is remove the item from the consent calendar, which does not require a motion. Then we can proceed with a motion on the consent calendar and then we can take up his motion on that item.
Okay. So we will remove it from the consent calendar and deal with that afterward. So we now, I will entertain a motion to approve the amended consent calendar.
Still moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Spurro?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Do we have an opportunity to ask a question on that consent calendar in discussion before we?
Sure.
Roll call vote. Sorry, I have to put my glasses on. I had a question about the BNSF restricted covenant. And I guess Jennifer is labeled as the staff contact on that. Reading through those documents, it said something about not maintaining the underpass with that exchange of land. Were they referring to creating a new underpass or the current underpass that's there going into city beach?
Going into city beach. It'd be the current. So the agreement with BNSF as part of this property exchange is essentially what it's doing is it's moving the restricted covenant that applies to currently the city-owned property. And I'll probably say it real quick. Bear with me just a second. The agreement with BNSF is they have an interest in the property that the city currently owns here between the hotel and the pathway that it cannot be used for commercial purposes, it's for recreational purposes. So this agreement with BNSF is transferring that over to this property here, the RV property, releasing that restriction here, but moving it over to the property that the city would be exchanging for. And so the underpass that it is reflecting is they don't have responsibility. That would be the underpass right here into city beach.
Have they never had responsibility for that underpass?
No.
Well, that's always been up to the city to repair and maintain that underpass.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Yep, this will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Spurro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Groot?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Okay, amended consent calendar is approved. And we now have the tabled item or a motion to table the item 6F, which is appointment of four, or I should say confirmation of four Planning and Zoning Commission Appointments. It was seconded for discussion. You heard from Councilman Espiro, the motion. Would anyone like to comment on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I just wanted a couple of points of clarification. Jennifer and Melissa, can you please clarify how many total applications were received?
It will take me a minute to get in there, but yes.
The council may be interested to know, I conducted eight interviews.
I apologize, I have to get into another program to get to it. So just a moment.
Jennifer?
Yeah.
I'm there.
Yes, Melissa.
I'm going to do a second count on this, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
We received a total of 18 applications.
Thanks, Melissa. And then I just wanted to make sure I understand what Joel's saying. So we have the credentials or resumes of the four people that are being suggested for acceptance by the mayor tonight, but not the other remaining applications. Are you saying that you need more time to review the four that are in the packet tonight? Or that you need more time to look at other ones?
Right, I say both. I just want to know, I guess, how the conclusion was made where I see the applications that I did see, like Mr. Dorman and Moore, who seemed to be more qualified in this particular position for planning and zoning, how possibly we came to the conclusion of the final four. It's a big decision. We have a big future. So I guess maybe if I can get some more insight from the mayor and the interview, whoever did the interviews of why this election over some of the other, what I would say, more qualified candidates.
Yeah, fair question. So only one seat is allowed on planning and zoning for a non-city resident. And Mr. Dorman, Dorman or Dorman? Dorman would fit that qualification. So we did receive four or five applications that were out of city. Several of them were highly qualified, including Mr. Dorman.
And?
And I did interview Mr. Dorman as well. And I found that he was a good candidate, but he didn't rise to the top.
And we can only have one out of city candidate?
That's right.
Okay, now is that Mr. McGrann?
Mr. Yeah, McGrann, that's right.
He's resonated very well. I guess was Andrew Moore, was he outside the city limits or was he in the city limits? Did you guys?
He is within city limits and I did not interview him.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe you interviewed him. I think he was the last.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
I believe it was the very, the very last one that you interviewed, Mr. Moore, Andrew Moore, in city limits.
Andrew Moore, okay. Yeah, I was thinking the the man that ran for council. Different more.
Yes.
I still have that image burned in my mind.
So to your point, Shannon, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, yes, more time and I guess this is a unique, I haven't been in this position before. We're not the ones that necessarily do the interviewing. It just seems like there is more qualified candidates. So I'm just expressing a possible concern. It could be something to look into, especially with the next four years or next years to come. So very big decisions with housing, zoning, affordability, so.
I would just, can I go ahead if you want to speak? I do want to add a few words though, in defense of my selections. Amelia Boyd has served the city for several years on the Parks and Rec Commission Committee, I should say. And she's demonstrated her commitment for her determination. She's consistently present and engaged. And, and she, actually everyone I interviewed, she's the only one that that clearly had read the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, which is the most relevant document for Planning and Zoning Commission. So I think she's highly qualified. I also think it's really important to remain, maintain balance on the commission. And we are losing Kate on the commission, who Kate Huesman has served very well. And definitely having a woman on the commission is, I think, essential. Luke Amott also demonstrated, in my mind, first of all, he's demonstrated himself to be a good candidate for the commission through his resume. But I was impressed through the campaign trail, his persistent presence here in the council chambers. That demonstrated to me how engaged he is and concerned with city-related issues. And Ben McGrann also had an impressive resume and demonstrated himself to be very well suited for the commission because of his experience in development and development management in particular. And then, of course, John Hastings, who has served the city very well over the last several years. And we certainly appreciate his continued, I certainly appreciate his continued service on the commission. So I think he's done very well and served as the vice chair during the last meeting, in fact. And I think he did a really good job. So that's, you know, in summary, the reasoning behind my decision. So I hope the council can look upon those favorably and approve these nominations.
I had a question, maybe I missed something, but I didn't see that we had access to any other resumes besides this. Did I?
I'm seeing that in your packet now too. The resumes that are present in the packet here are for the candidates before you for consideration.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because you said you had seen something else and I thought, oh no, I missed something.
Okay, yeah, no, I didn't see that. So I thought I missed it.
That was my only question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And that was mostly my concern. One of my concerns was not being able for myself to look at all the candidates. And again, this is a unique situation, we haven't gone through this. But again, the future coming up is going to be very intense. So I just wanted to make sure that I did my due diligence to know who I was voting for, or at least the options. And with a clear conscience right now, it's not to say these won't be the four. I have utmost respect for each person named on there, very much so. But so it had nothing to do with them and as who they are, more of, I wanted a clear conscience, knowing that this is the path forward for the next years and we're going to have some big decisions coming up. So and this affects us because planning and zoning decisions come to us up here, so.
Mr. Royer, one more ask. Do we have a policy on that historically? I don't. Do we normally see all the resumes as a council? Jennifer, can you speak to that or how, or maybe it's just a process, not necessarily policy? So I'd like to know where we are, just for clarification.
Since committees and commissions are mayoral appointments and council affirmations of those appointments, the typical process has been that the mayor in the seat selects their appointments and those are submitted to council for review and approval. And the full applications for those appointed individuals from the mayor submitted in the packet. We have applications for all of the applicants for the position, but in keeping with typical practice and the protocol around it, it's been the application submitted for those that are mayoral appointments.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. This has nothing to do with that, sorry for the interruption. There's a young lady that's, I think she's got her camera light on, that's incredibly distracting. I'm not sure if you're recording or if you're flashing the light. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry. Any other questions? Or comments?
I guess, is there anything that precludes the council from reviewing? I understand that's the procedure that has happened since I've been up here. I understand that, but given the sheer volume of applications and just in the last year alone, the number of decisions that have come from planning and zoning to council. I mean, I will no longer be here, but I can only see that it's going, the intensity is going to increase dramatically. And I can understand there would be a concern that these appointments are made with careful consideration, not saying that the mayor has not done so, but if there's concern for to just have the ability to look at the other applications, then that makes people more comfortable. And it's not, you know, prohibited. I don't see any problem with that.
If council chose to table this decision until the next council meeting, then applications for all of the candidates could be provided to council with their council packet. I would note that Planning and Zoning Commission, we will be short commission members. So in order to move things forward, we really, if council chooses to table this item, tabling till the January 5th meeting would be something we would, we would work with, but we are planning orientation for planning and zoning and do have upcoming hearings and items. So we really, in terms of functioning, need a decision at the January 5th council meeting if you decide to table.
And I'm just expressing my concerns and thinking about the future legacy we're going to leave. And nothing against these people individually. I most respect for them.
All right, council, unless there's anything else, this will be a roll call vote. And the vote is on the motion to table the 6F item appointment of Planning and Zoning Commission members, four members listed here, to table that until the January 5th meeting. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman McAllister?
No.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilman Groot?
No.
Councilwoman Rule?
No.
Councilwoman Spurro?
Yes.
And my vote is no. So now we're back to approval of item 6F, appointment of the four Planning and Zoning Appointments. Amelia Boyd, Luke Amott, Ben McGrann, and John Hastings. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Groot?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
No.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Asperl?
No.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
And the four Planning and New Planning and Zoning Commissioner members are approved. Welcome and thank you for your service. Thank you for being willing to serve. Thank you, John. Okay, first, under Old Business this evening is the Proposed Ordinance for the Water Revenue Refunding Bonds Series 2022. City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton will provide, or I'm sorry, will introduce Laura McAlon, our city's bond counsel, who will provide a presentation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are glad to have Laura here tonight. At a previous council meeting, council did approve Laura as our bond counsel for purposes of refunding our water revenue bonds. And again, so citizens who are here tonight maybe have missed the past discussions. This is about refinancing some of the outstanding bonds for our water treatment system. And the refinancing is estimated to save ratepayers between a million and a million and a half dollars in costs. Obviously, it depends what the market's doing when we can get to the refinancing. But Laura is functioning as our legal counsel in that regard. So nice to see you, Lauren, and happy birthday.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Birthday.
Happy birthday.
And I always like spending my birthdays.
Do you want us to sing?
Frankly, it's the third week of the month every time, so you guys know how. But I always spend my birthday with us. So you have before you ordinance number 1390. And what that is, is a bond ordinance that we have prepared. And this is a little different than the bond ordinances that if you were on city council in the past that you acted on. And let's see, we did that in 2012 and 2013 to actually authorize the debt that we're proposing to be refunded now. And on those bonds, you had a financing deal from USDA and you accepted the terms. And you knew the exact terms before you went ahead and approved it. In this case, because it's a refinancing and because of the volatility that can happen in the bond market, the proposal here is that you authorize this bond ordinance, delegating certain authority, certain, within certain parameters, to your city administrator and your finance director to actually sell the bonds. And they would be priced in February and then close in early March. March 3rd is the proposed schedule. So in order to be nimble, to be flexible, to be able to get out there and have your municipal advisor watching the market and soliciting the bids for this financing, that's why this is a little different than what Sandpoint has done in the past. And I'm not going to go through, you're welcome, the entire ordinance. But what it does is it simply, in a lot of words, and legalese, authorizes, as I said, your city administrator and your finance director to be the designated representatives. It authorizes the refinancing or refunding in IRS terms, the refunding of your 2012 and your 2013 debt. This is all water revenue debt. That's the only debt that we're refinancing. And it has some, the certain parameters are that the principal amount of the refinanced bond not exceed $13,425,069. That number is tied exactly to the principal amount that would be outstanding on the debt. So no new debt. This is just simply re. So no new debt. This is just simply refinancing existing debt. The parameters are found in section 19 of the ordinance. And those are that the interest rate on the refunded bonds cannot exceed 2.65%. That's your recommendation from your municipal advisor, that the, or excuse me, not the interest rate, that the total interest cost not exceed 2.65. So you're going out for multiple years' terms, hopefully shortening the term, the amount of the time for repayment. So it's a, it's a total interest cost. It's not, it's not a flat interest rate across all the maturities and all the terms. It requires that you recognize a debt service savings of at least $1 million aggregate cash flow savings. So those are the primary parameters, the principal amount, the total interest cost, and then the savings. If the pricing were to come back, that the savings was less than $1 million, your city administrator and your finance director would have to come back to you to amend this ordinance and amend the delegation of authority to them. So these are the minimums that the refining, financing would have to meet in order for it to go forward. And then you would have a report. Once the bonds are sold and priced and closed, you will have a report back from your city administrator and your finance director of the exact dollar amount of the savings and the exact total interest cost. Can I answer any questions about the ordinance that's before you?
Any questions, council? No? Apparently not. Thank you.
My job easy. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would entertain a motion that this ordinance pass its first reading by title only, and the summary is approved.
So moved second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be, well, I guess I got to read it. An ordinance of the city, ordinance number 1390. An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, Bonner County, Idaho, authorizing the issuance of the city's water revenue refunding bonds, series 2022, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $13,425,069 to provide funds necessary to prepay and refund certain outstanding water revenue bonds of the city, delegating certain authority to the designated representative in connection with the sale and issuance of the bonds and other terms of the bonds under the conditions set forth herein, authorizing preliminary and final official statements pledging revenues for payment of the bonds, providing for other matters properly relating thereto, and providing for the effective date hereof. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Aspero?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Motion passes. The ordinance passed its first reading by title only, and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings, once in the ordinance's entirety, be suspended, and that the ordinance pass its second and third readings under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rule?
No.
Councilman Aspero?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Motion passed, and this ordinance is considered read, passed, and adopted under suspension of the rules. The final item under Old Business this evening is a word of the construction contract for the police department remodel project. City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton will provide a presentation for us.
Well, I'm going to have Cheryl come up in case there are any questions because she handled this procurement for us again very well. And I'm also going to have the chief come back up. And you can see there's lots of interest in the room tonight on this particular item. And there should be.
Are we for or against?
Let me just pull up the agenda report here real quick. Sharing it, sharing it for the rest of the world on the big screen. We've gone out to bid for a remodel for the police department. And for those who have not participated or heard all of our discussions about this, this remodel is really about making our police department more functional. I have council members nodding their heads because we gave you a tour to see what type of environment our police officers and staff are working in with our police department. It's become quite a raps maze over the years. Not only does it address a more efficient and effective working environment for them, but it also will provide an environment in the future where we can, we can grow with our force, with improvements to the locker rooms, expanded lockers, and much improved patrol room and other improvements. This is not only including just the police department area, but in addition to this, this also includes approximately $75,000 for replacement of the city's emergency backup generator, which is beyond its useful life. And in our last power outage, we had our transfer switch fail between city hall and the generator. And they don't make those transfer switches anymore. So we had to have one jerry-rigged. That's why we did a shutdown at city hall a week ago early so that we could get this installed, so we could have our computer systems backing up. What's important to know about the generator project is, as we stand right now at the city, we have very limited portions of city hall that are connected to our backup generator. We've got some of our evidence areas and police. We have our detective's room as it is currently, which was formerly, used to be dispatch. That's why it's connected. And really, we have the generator. It's our fire doors, so the fire trucks can respond, and it's our servers. And so if we were to have an emergency, an extended emergency here, we don't have the rest of city hall on backup generators. So this project really provides backup services for us to function as a government facility in the case of an extended emergency. In addition to that, as we've talked at prior council meetings, it also gives us the ability that should we have a power outage, which seem to be coming more frequently during the winter time, and there was a need to provide residents a place to go to that was warm, a temporary warming shelter. And ultimately, it would be our emergency operations center through the county that would provide a larger warming shelter. But if we needed something in the interim for our elderly until that happened, we would have the ability to open up council chambers to the public. So it really is a critical upgrade, not only for our emergency services and what they do in the community, but for us to provide emergency services and facilities to the community during the time of an emergency. In addition to that, this project, in addition to the amount that has been budgeted with local dollars, and this fair portion of this project is also eligible for reimbursement with our ARPA funding because it involves HVAC improvements. It's about improving air quality and police, as you'll recall, under our remodel that was recently completed. We replaced all of our HVAC units on the roof. And one of the keys was that we needed to replace the ducting to actually get the better airflow. And so that happened in the area that we remodeled. It has not happened in our other areas in city hall that haven't been remodeled, including the police department. And that's really about the health and safety of our employees. The key recommendation is getting that airflow for health and safety of the employees. So that's included in this project, and we'd be eligible under our grant. We did receive six bids in response to our RFP. And as you will note, our margins were very slim from lowest to highest, which told us, number one, our architect was right on in terms of his cost projections for this project. But also, we're not seeing anything that would indicate we were way off, something we need to look at further in terms of bids coming in. I would also note that a number of subs are from our local community and the project manager that would be assigned by the awarded bidder. If council approves this tonight, Meridian Construction actually lives here in our community, is known to our community. So with that, I'll hand over to the chief to say anything else about how important this is. But this is just in summary, from my perspective, this has been a long time coming for our police department, our police officers. And we certainly hope council approves this tonight.
Thank you. I know it's been a long day for you all, so I won't talk too long. We moved in about 25 years ago, just to kind of give you a perspective. And when the police department moved in, they just could, just made it work. And so the philosophy for the last 25 years has just been that. They just, we've made it work. And we've added walls, tore down walls, moved around, but we've never really remodeled it to fit where we're at or where we're going. So Jennifer talked about a couple of those things that we get to accomplish. We look at Sandpoint, as Councilman Aspero talked about our growth, our increase in staff, where we're going to put those employees. By doing, one of the positives about this remodel is it gives us that space now where we can grow and plan for our future, along with fixing a lot of those issues that we have historically had. So we're ecstatic. We're hoping that you all go ahead and approve it. Did you get any questions?
Any questions?
I just had a comment. I did take the tour. And so just to let the members of the public kind of get a feel for that, it's sort of like a 1910 farmhouse with a really narrow staircase and lots of extra rooms added on as the 10 children came along. So it seems like in this day and age, they should really be working in an atmosphere that is much more professional than that. But it really, really lacks that professional level that our staff, I believe, deserves in safety and so many other things. So just to give the public a perspective, if they're concerned about the amount of money they're seeing down there.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
No smells.
No smells. We want the smells gone. That is the number one priority.
All right, any other questions? Yeah, okay. Thank you, chief. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for a word of contract for police department remodels, or motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Aspero?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Motion passes. The first item under New Business this evening is a request for authorization to apply for a child pedestrian safety grant. Infrastructure and Development Services Director Amanda Wilson will provide a presentation for us.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. That is a tough item to follow, but I think I got it with kids. So this evening, we are going to be considering, requesting your consideration of a application for a grant specifically called the Children Pedestrian Safety Program Application. So I'm going to run you through a quick presentation. So the request is associated with Division Avenue, a project referred to as the Corridor Improvement Project, specifically Phase 1. And again, the request is to consider authorizing staff to submit a grant application for up to $250,000 to the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council for the grant to improve specifically the eastern side of Division Avenue between Superior Street and Highway 2. So a little bit of background regarding Division Avenue. I know this is not our first conversation about it. We kind of kicked off the conversation most recently with a road safety audit. That is a federal program that's pretty specific that we received a grant to complete. And really, it's looking at a full assessment, trying to answer the two questions in front of you, which are what elements pose a safety concern, to what extent, under what circumstances, and then what opportunities, arguably most importantly, exist to eliminate or mitigate those hazards. So that road safety audit was brought forward to council and accepted via Resolution 21007. It was included in your packet if you're looking for some more information on that. In a nutshell, it really took a deep dive into the key issues along that corridor, as well as provided those proposed improvements or mitigation efforts. Here's a few photos of the current conditions on Division Avenue from Superior Street to Highway 2. Just to recap, what you're kind of looking at in these photos is a lack of space for snow. And we haven't even had much of a year, or much of a snow year to this point. And so that sidewalk is functionally not usable. There's certainly an enforcement effort that we could have a conversation about and ensuring that those sidewalks are cleared. That is valid. However, it becomes a real challenge for those adjacent property owners to achieve that compliance when our road crews are placing the snow on the sidewalk, and there's really not a lot of place for it to go. We also have pedestrians walking around the snow. The sidewalk is about three and a half feet wide, which is extremely substandard at this location. So kids are walking in Division Avenue. I personally also had to walk in the middle of the lane to even get around that berm. Additionally, what you're seeing there are driveway approaches, and those do not meet ADA. Their cross slope is far too steep for compliance. We also have ADA ramps that are not compliant as well. So that's just a few highlights of some of the key issues at those locations. Here's an example that was included in the road safety audit of some truncated domes on an ADA ramp that are installed, again, not in compliance, and some additional concerns with the crosswalk there as well. So if you're looking at a cross-section view of what a large portion of Division Avenue looks like today, what you'll notice is it's a pretty wide right-of-way. It's about 57 to 60 feet wide as a total right-of-way. However, majority of that right-of-way is utilized with asphalt and drivelines. So to give you some point of reference, the interstate lanes that you drive on are 12 feet wide. That is the standard across the entire nation. So an 18-foot-wide lane is really quite excessive. So we have a better use of the space, right? And that's what the road safety audit concluded. Granted, just to clarify, this is obviously a cross-section where there's not a turn lane. When we get to a turn lane, we're still meeting minimum standards and typically exceeding them, albeit we do have substandard sidewalk widths and we have substandard bike lanes. So overall, there are clearly a long list of issues with this corridor. Again, you can reference the road safety audit with that. We get about 6,600 trips of vehicles on Division Avenue every day. It is a primary truck route. We have over 2,000 kids that attend the three schools that are on Division. And the estimated total cost to complete all of our improvements along the Division Corridor is over $10 million. So $10 million, it's going to be a multi-year project, potentially taking us, we anticipate, about 10 years to get to the point where those issues are fully addressed. So to shift from the problems to the solution, the Corridor Improvement Project really is trying to achieve these top 10 improvements. And I won't read them all to you. We've gone over them multiple times. But I think it's really critical to focus on the fact that we need the buffers for the snow, a place to put trashcans, a place to have a safe place to walk on the east side all year long, and really to improve the overall look and feel of that corridor, to encourage kids to want to walk on the east side of the road as well, right? And give them that option to connect to the residential areas and some of those other businesses that they're using across the street. So fast forward to what can we do now?
Can you back up to that last slide for a moment, please? So presumably, where there's a turning lane preserved there, you would take that out of the planting strip for that section?
I have a few images to show you on that in just a bit. Yep, great question, though. And the answer is yes. So fast forward to what can we accomplish today? What are some low-hanging fruits? And how can we structure dollars the farthest in the short term, until we can get to that overall long-term vision? We're going to talk a little bit tonight about why this location was selected, but I at least wanted to start off with a map. So again, this is Division Avenue, east side only, south of Superior Street to approximately Highway 2. You'll note here on the image, the community path that runs adjacent to Highway 2. We have high school to middle school, the library that the kids are going to, as well as the elementary school that maybe their siblings go to, and they're walking back and forth. They're going to programs. There's also a charter school, obviously just south by about a quarter mile from this location. They're going to programs. There's also a charter school, obviously just south by about a quarter mile from this location. The student count in the reference earlier did not include the charter school. So why this location of everything that I just highlighted, why here? So A, the road safety audit dedicated to this corridor really focuses that the biggest issues are in this location. Additionally, this project is included in our adopted multimodal plan, which is really significant from a grant application as well as the fact that our community had significant input into those plans, and there's community buy-in as far as the need to go. So Phase One, and specifically between Superior and Highway Two, it is the area with the greatest number of issues by sheer quantity. It's also the area with the largest number of kids. One of the key components of this grant, I wouldn't say just one of them, the key component of this grant and the highest scoring factor is that it's primarily focused on kids. So if we had an equal number of users of adults as well as children, we would not score as high. So of all the locations on this corridor, it is a really clear case to make that this this improvement would absolutely positively impact pedestrians that are children. So that works to our advantage as well. The project has to be completed as in built out by December of twenty twenty two. So we can't spend a ton of time engineering a bunch of solutions that are really complex. So it's critical that we're able to hit the ground running with something that's pretty straightforward. This project fits within that. Just as a note, there is no match required on this grant. However, we are intending to supplement the two hundred and fifty thousand with our general fund budgeted that we have for sidewalk projects as well, really to help stretch those dollars.
To the amount of what?
Fifty thousand total.
Okay.
And so here are those images, Mayor, that you were asking about. There is intentionally a shading issue or going on with these, and I'll explain that. But on the left-hand side, what you're looking at is that cross section where there is no turn lane. And on the right-hand side is the cross section where you do have the turn lane and you get to the intersection. So again, the right away width doesn't change. It's just that buffer strip that's getting a little bit narrower. The reason for the different colors is just trying to reflect that, again, this Phase One is only for the east side of the road. So we don't have the funds to start working on the efforts on the west side, albeit there's some significant efforts on that side as well that need to occur, as you can see from these images. So how would it look if we took only the east side and we didn't touch the west side? So here's a schematic. I apologize, the the program that I used to create this doesn't have the option for a multi-use path. But on the west side, that is actually a multi-use path, not a sidewalk as the image depicts. And so everything on the west would stay. We would go down to twelve-foot lanes. It might end up being twelve and a half. We would have standard-sized bike lanes where a bicycle isn't having to count on a portion of the curb or gutter as their riding corridor, as well as a six-foot buffer on the east side and a six-foot sidewalk. That is the new standard. We have a lot of sidewalks in town that are four feet and five feet, but six feet is a best practice.
So Amanda?
Yep.
And maybe you're going to get there. I'm going to ask you about the turning lanes again.
Okay.
Do you want me to wait?
No.
Okay. Well, here, if we're just doing the east side only, how do you accommodate the turn lane? Because you're not able to capture the the planting strip on the west side.
The planting strip on the east side would get narrower as we get to the intersection.
Right, but you're only gaining six feet there at the most.
Right. So you have to come to a shallow situation when you get to the drivelines.
I see. Thanks.
So the numbers to me in the picture further back, there was no longer going to be a bike lane on the east side in the multimodal plan because there was going to be a shared pathway. But in this picture, it shows a bike lane on both sides. So now I'm confused.
I understand the confusion because we don't have a completed design with a complete alignment. So it's just trying to take frankly cartoon images and and do the best that we can with it, but I'm happy to go back. So in this, this is the final solution, right? So in the final solution, we actually have the six-foot sidewalk on the east side. We have the planter strip. And because we're also making the existing multi-use path on the west side wider and we're adding a buffer on the west side, we can no longer fit bike lanes. But because we're not doing the work on the west side in the interim Phase One, we have the real estate to maintain bike lanes except for when we get to an intersection.
Okay, and then we'll repaint all that eventually. Okay.
Yes, and we will refine those details. Obviously, we are just at the grant application phase. We'll be coming back to council requesting authorization to go out to bid like we do with all of our construction projects. And you'll be able to see how this all functions and flows together.
Have a question.
Yes.
So this is going to go between Michigan and Superior. Is that correct?
I'll go back to the location map if that's okay. It's a little bit further than Michigan, actually.
I was just wondering what it's going to end kids into. Is there is there a sidewalk assembly in place to transition?
Yes, I'll go back to the location map and I think I can a little bit more. So many of you know the tire shop that's right there on the south end adjacent to the multi-use path. So the new sidewalk will connect back into that existing sidewalk that is there. It is a substandard sidewalk. But staying away from that intersection is really best at this point because it is a signalized intersection and there's a turn pocket there. So we're really not in a position to make that a complete fix at this time. That end point will potentially end up further north by a little bit. This is an approximate. Again, we really need to dive into the weeds of that alignment. We got to look at drainage and those sort of things, but we won't be dumping pedestrians just into the road. They'll connect back into the existing sidewalk.
Amanda, I think it's important to note too that confines for this project, much of the combines confines are on the maximum amount that we can apply for under the grant. So that that's what's confining the project to a smaller level project. And it being a smaller phase than maybe ideally what we would like, it's the amount of the grant that we can apply for.
Thank you. That's a good point of clarity. So just to show you an example of how we would do just the east side and not the west side. It's actually referred to as a lateral shift. Many of you have experienced it and just not known necessarily. That's what it's called. We have a similar situation in our downtown core, albeit that's technically considered a chicane because you veer one direction and you veer back. In a lateral shift, you're only veering one direction. So this is from a federal highway traffic calming primer. So just to note that doing it only on the east side isn't necessarily a negative. It actually is considered still a traffic calming feature and will result in a lateral shift. This is a snapshot at the timeline and the budget amount. Again, trying to use the maximum grant dollars, the two hundred and fifty thousand for construction and really use the additional funds for, so the amount for construction of two hundred and sixty there is really the two fifty for construction in addition to testing and some of the additional administrative services related to quality control that are necessary, and then about forty thousand dollars for the design documents and big documents. Again, we're hoping to hear if we get the grant, assuming if council were to authorize staff to apply for it. We should know if we get the grant by March and be able to receive funds and award the contract in early summer. Our intent is to have the project completed by October, even though technically the grant doesn't require it until December, but that'll give us some time to get closeout done and have a little bit of contingency on performing for that grant. So again, this is the request before you this evening, and I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
All right. Do we have any questions from council? Apparently, that was an excellent presentation. Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, carrying none, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for child pedestrian safety grant application for Division Avenue. Is there a motion? It's been moved and
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilman Sprowe?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Motion passes. The next item under new business is acceptance of a grant from the Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation in the amount of twenty thousand dollars awarded to the city of Sandpoint to complete a housing supply, demand, and land use study and support costs for a contract facilitator to deliberate the findings of the study and determine actions moving forward. It's anticipated that ten thousand dollars will be used towards the study, and the remaining ten thousand dollars will be available for a facilitator. The study will provide critical data to inform efforts of the workforce housing task force that I've convened and the comprehensive plan update to be undertaken in two thousand and twenty-two. So to give you a little bit of background on this, I've been working with the Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation for some time under their Community Health Academy program. And that program is designed to help educate and empower mayors across the state of Idaho to to make an impact in their community in a variety of different ways that support public health and well-being. And one of those ways that were identified by the C H A was workforce housing and access to housing in general. So I've been participating with this group for the better part of a little over a year now, maybe a year and a half. And part of that program concludes with the Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation offering a grant of up to twenty thousand dollars to each mayor who is participating in the program. So that's how this opportunity came forward. And you know, given the importance of access to housing and how how critical a discussion that that has become in our community over the last year and longer, I thought that that would be particularly a good use of that grant fund, that those grant funds. And I particularly noticed a real need as I initiated the the workforce housing task force, it became very apparent from the beginning that we need to provide better support data and develop a study that can help us as it's laid out in in the original, in this proposal here to really support a support a study of supply and demand. And as we as we witnessed, I think, at our last zone change hearing last month, that there's a real need for us to do a land use study. I think that would complement that and the comprehensive land use plan very well. So that's the, oh, and I would do want to say one other thing. In facilitation of the workforce housing task force, which has really been, you know, a work that I've been doing, I have had support from staff. Melissa's been really helpful in that effort. I've had some really good support, both from legal as well as from planning. But there there's definitely a need for, on my end, for some more support there. And so that's part of what this what this grant would would help towards is is supporting the staffing and facilitation of that of that workforce housing task force. So particularly given with the loss of our of Linda Heiss, who was a great service to the city here, she was a really integral component staff member for me and in helping me to develop this initiative and to help me prepare for these task force meetings. So her, and of course, she went to the private sector about a month and a half ago. And that that's noticeable absence for me on the task force in particular, as well as not having an in-house city planner, which we're in the process of of finding an in-house planner as well. So so there is a hole there on my end where I could really use some support in that task force effort with a facilitator there. So I'm happy to take any other questions that council may have. And so, yeah, feel free.
Um, anybody? Okay, so do we have any idea who's performing the study? Who's going to be this facilitator?
No, as far as the study, where we, while we have reached out to a well-known planner down in the Boise area who has worked with us in the past, Paul Kushlin, Paul, it's a Paul.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to speak to the
Yeah, sure.
A little bit. So the, I did include in the packet, so council and the public would have information about the scope of this study that would be undertaken. The scope is actually probably larger than what this this grant is. I've been working with Darren Fluke, our interim city planner, asked him to put together a scope so that we would have data to inform our comprehensive plan update. We expanded the scope to include further analysis on housing. And I've also been working with Phil Kushlin, who works with us on some financial analysis, has helped us with some of our planning and strategic planning, has looked at including jobs, land use, and those things in the study as well. So we have identified a consultant. There's already been an initial conversation with the consultant that would carry out the study. It's Leland Consulting. They're out of Portland, Oregon. But they're very well-known this side of the country for their analysis that they do, particularly around housing, economic benefits as well as land studies. And they do a significant amount of work with cities up and down the state. So they are prepared to move forward with this scope of work before the end of the year. We would be getting that under contract, and we would likely have the study completed by the end of the first quarter of twenty twenty-two in time for us to start picking up the comprehensive plan as well. So we have not done an independent study like this in the past, particularly with our comp plans. It's been, we've reviewed our local data. We've had community input into the comp plan, but this will give us some outside data and analysis to a much larger extent than what we've done in the past. And will assist both the housing task force and any planning, strategic planning efforts in that regard. But every element of this of this study will influence the development of the update to the comp plan.
Well said. And on the contractor side, I did interview with Ellen Campfield Nelson from Agnew Beck, a consultancy of planning and housing consultancy down in the Boise area. They were recommended to me as a primary contact from our contract planner. And I will be seeking out other opportunities there as well. So we haven't made a commitment with that one. But that answers your questions.
Just a follow-up for Jennifer. Have they worked with towns similar to, I guess, demographic is not the right word. Size characteristics is, does this, you said they've worked with towns throughout different areas. But have they worked with smaller, let's call it resort-type towns? And so are they a good match for our town or?
I feel like they're a good match. They've done a lot of work with cities up and down the state. And interestingly enough, I was working with both Darren on developing the scope for the the comp plan for analysis, as well as with Phil on some other economic analysis. And both of them recommended using Leland Consulting. So they've done significant amount of work again with cities up and down Idaho. They have done resort cities. One of the examples we looked at where they just completed an in-depth study somewhat similar to this, but even more so focused on housing was in Bozeman, Montana, who's experiencing in the same issues that we are. So yes, very well-qualified, and they will be coming on site and doing a lot of boots-on-the-ground work. I would also mention to council that this was a topic. We have a monthly meeting that is convened by Bonner County Commissioners and their planning department and the Quad Cities, the four of our cities in the area, as well as some of the cities from other cities more broadly from the county attend this monthly meeting. And doing a similar study was a topic at that meeting last Friday. So I'm sending over the scope of work to the county. Some of the other cities are looking at piggybacking on the same firm and the same service to be able to expand. And the more of us that we have playing in there, the more information it gives us really relative to our broader community, which is outside of our city limits. So.
So beyond Bozeman, do you know any other towns that? So beyond Bozeman, do you know any other towns that they've?
They've done a lot of work in Boise, they've done a lot of work in Twin Falls. Off the top of my head, I, I can't, I can't think of any others right off the top of my head, but we had extensively looked at at their background and again, have two highly quali- qualified individuals that we work with that work with other cities and said, absolutely, this is the firm who has the ability to do this work, capability and experience in similar communities.
Okay, thank you.
You for the questions, counsel? All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Please fill out a comment card at the, oh, you haven't? Okay, all right.
Kristen. State your last name for the record.
Hi, good evening, I'm Kristen Stike, I live in Ponderay, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, thanks.
Yeah, so I'm noticing that six F voting on that really does relate to two of the other agenda items tonight. Eight B and eight C. So for eight B, I was taking a look at Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation, Blue Cross of Idaho, definitely known as a major health institution. And so now it's, it's an umbrella term, right? Public well-being. And so I was taking a look just now at their website and I'll just go ahead and briefly read this. It's a one paragraph. We are an active partner in developing and funding innovative projects to build sustainable change. Through this catalytic engagement process, I'm emphasizing their bold words. The Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation of Health builds partnerships with the goal to create transformational change and ultimately sustainable change. Okay, so we have somebody who is already stating very clearly their goal and they are being put on a data fact-finding mission. However, they've already stated their goal, you, you shall be also have stated your goal. So in this particular case, the horse, the horse and the cart are combined. So it's not necessarily making conclusions based on where the data might lead. It appears that they are to, they have the goal and define the, define the data to support the goal. Confirmation reasoning. So I just wanted to point that out, it says it on their website directly. And it also actually says it right here in A B to determine actions moving forward. It's always an option to not move forward based on the data. There are going to be contract facilitators that will package that data, perhaps even sell you that data. That's all I have for this, thank you for listening.
Thank you. And to be clear, the goal here is to improve access to housing for Sandpoint and the area's workforce. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this matter? Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would entertain a motion to accept the grant from the Blue Cross of Idaho Foundation.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman McAllister, yes. Councilwoman Groth, yes. Councilwoman Sherman, yes. Councilman Darling, yes. Councilman Sprow.
Before I vote, I'd like to let Ms. Stike know that what you said, I take the heart and we'll keep our eyes open, at least I will for the future and wording and things of that nature. But for now, I will vote yes.
Councilwoman Rule.
I will vote yes, and I'd like to request a staff if we could maybe have some information on some smaller towns that they've worked with. I'd be interested in just reading more up on this company, thank you.
Great, motion passes. The final item under new business is authorization to participate with approximately 16 Idaho resort cities that are working together and hiring a contract lobbyist to address resort city issues in Idaho, such as allocating state ARPA funding for workforce housing infrastructure needs and short-term rental regulations up to $2,000 is requested for this expenditure. Does council have any questions? And I can give you a little background here too, if it's helpful. I was reached out to by Wendy Jackwett. She was a former legislator for many years, a former House Minority Leader. She served on the Joint Finance Appropriations Committee. So anyway, she's from Blaine County and I don't know if council, council people know Sun Valley was responsible for creating the local option tax in Idaho in 1983. And so and that's the area that she's from. So Sun Valley, Ketchum, Haley, that resort area of Idaho has been dealing with a lot of the challenges that we're experiencing now in terms of workforce housing and housing affordability that has displaced a lot of the local workforce in that area. So they've been dealing with these issues for a long time and and you know, so they're, they're trying to, they recognize that other resort cities across the state have similar issues. As you all know, we've had our rounds with the local option tax, both in terms of well, just developing our own initiative and then trying to get that passed. But then there's been quite a, quite a question as to whether or not we would even have eligibility to participate in the lot going forward as our population reaches 10,000, that critical number that would then define us as no longer a resort city. So we've been working with the legislature for the last few years to try and secure our future access to authorize or to, to use the lot in the future. So this is kind of, you know, been, I think, a really critical issue for Sandpoint historically and certainly going forward, it will continue to be. Even though the local option tax didn't pass this last election with a super majority, it certainly has previously in 2015 and we still operate with a local option tax currently that's that we call our bed tax. So that's a tax that's solely exclusively on short-term rentals, hotels, motels, that kind of thing. And that's used to fund a lot of the impacts, additional impacts that are brought on by the impact of tourism in our community. So all that to say that I think this will continue to be an important issue for Sandpoint going forward. Not only protecting the local option taxing authority for Sandpoint and other resort cities in Idaho, but ensuring that, that we continue to have that, that authority into the future. And that, you know, there can be other opportunities to perhaps use that tool or discover other tools that we could lobby for in the legislature to support the, the challenges that resort cities like Sandpoint face and will continue to face in the future. So all that to say, this is a small price to pay, I think. There's 16 other resort cities, I believe, in the state of Idaho that are all being asked to participate. And so that, that would be a, we would all share in the cost of that lobbyist and this lobbyist would cost somewhere between 20 and $30,000 for, for the procession. So we've, I know you know, Ketchum's taking the lead on this. Wendy Jaquet is, is a volunteer who's well-resourced, knows a lot of people in the legislature and a lot of people in state leadership and is helping as a volunteer to sort of direct this effort. And she's identified a couple of well-qualified candidates that, that could do this work. So that's kind of where we're at. And I'm hoping that council can recognize that this is a money well spent for the long-term interest of Sandpoint going forward. And I hope that, that you can approve it. I'm happy to answer any questions, either myself or Jennifer, if, if we're able.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Couple of questions. I don't see the lot in here, it says funding to address workforce housing infrastructure needs and short-term rental regulations. I guess I'm a little, and I could have just misunderstood what you said. What does that have to do with the lot tax?
Yeah.
Fighting to keep the lot tax or?
Yeah, so and I, let me be a little more broad here. So this, the purpose of this, this request and this is many cities that would be making contributions like this. And that would fund a lobbyist that would be working full-time during the legislative session on behalf of resort cities, including Sandpoint. So what the, this, this specific directives and purpose of that, the directives that are given to that lobbyist will be determined by those member cities, including Sandpoint. And so, you know, there can be issues that could, that come up. There are issues that come up during the legislative session that we may not even be aware of at this point that, that are of importance to resort cities. And when those issues come up, it's important that Sandpoint and other resort cities have, have someone at the table that's paying attention, that's informed and is able to respond to those legislative issues as they arise. So, you know, so, so actually the, the range of issues that they could be addressing could be relatively broad. And certainly the city of Sandpoint is a, is a member, is a member city can propose or recommend that, that our lobbyist bring forward any, any suggestion or proposal to, to the legislature that's important to us. So, but I, I singled out the lot because that is one of those quintessential resort city issues that has certainly been an important issue for, for Sandpoint historically, and I would argue going forward as well. And that is something that I know other resort cities have concern around, not only protecting the lot, but either expanding its, its, its capacity or its, you know, range of use, may I say, as well as, you know, potentially lifting the cap, which is certainly a relevant concern for the city of Sandpoint, either eliminating or raising that population cap that we are nearly reaching as Sandpoint's population continues to grow. So all of these are issues that can be addressed by the lobbyist that would be representing us as a resort city.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I've got grave concerns with the funding an individual to lobby specifically against run short-term rental regulations. Short-term rental regulations or short-term rentals rather, in some case are the only options for people to retain their homes in specifically in resort city towns such as Sandpoint because of the cost of living, the cost of the properties is going up. We, as a council, when we implemented our short-term rental program, we allowed individuals to rent their properties up to six months with no, with no specific identification of the properties where commercially we've got the bubble around the particular unit or the particular space, but in residential areas, we've allowed rentals up to six months so people can occupy their homes, maybe snowbird in the winter, but come back. But and now it's, it's very relevant, it's almost becoming a means to retention of their homes in these resort city taxes. So I'm very concerned with any kind of regulations against short-term rentals.
Well, and let me be clear, so the legislature is, you know, been very explicit in 2017, they they made the, the state resolution that it's a private property right to rent out your personal home, right? So the short-term rental ordinance that the city of Sandpoint passed in 2017 in response to that was acknowledging and recognizing that private property, right? But also recognizing that we as a city have a certain authority and requirement to protect the public health and safety of our, of our neighborhoods of our city, right? So I see this, you know, I, I think, and you know, frankly, I've been, when I talk to people in, in Sandpoint and around the state, I'm really proud of our short-term rental ordinance and I, I really celebrate it. And I, and I can tell you, it's being modeled around the state as, as a, a responsible approach to, to, to managing growth and housing issues, particularly in resort communities. Because we've, we've demonstrated, I think, quite successfully that, that our short-term rental ordinance has really gone a long way to protect the local housing inventory, but at the same time respecting that private property right and recognizing that, that it is a huge benefit to private property owners to be able to rent out their home, you know, whether it's six months, a year, or you know, on a short-term basis and, and, you know, get the financial benefit from that. So, so I don't think that, you know, there's, there's nothing in this that is, that there's no aspiration to, you know, you know, legalize short-term rentals, if, if, if that's the implication that you're getting from this or, you know.
Three words, lobby regulations, you know, lobbyist, what is he going to be lobbying against specifically against about short-term rentals? I'm not even sure why short-term rentals are in there, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so give me one moment here, I'm reviewing Wendy Jaquet's email. Yeah, so the the three goals as, as stated are to, one, protect resort cities' local option tax, to create a coalition or unified voice that's long overdue by funding a lobbyist to make voices of resort cities heard, present new legislation and most likely defeat legislation that will be burdensome to the resort cities. So, so it's, it's all, it's very general, you know, at this point, you know, again, the, the directives of the lobbyists will be determined by the member cities, which, which could include the city of Sandpoint. Right now, the city has no representation, resort cities have no representation in the legislature. We are members of Association of Idaho Cities. And we, you know, we as you know, we have representation as cities of Idaho. But on a lot of these resort city-related issues, like the local option tax, like a lot of these housing issues that, that we're faced with now. It's, we don't really get a lot of support with AIC. The politics there are kind of complicated. But the reality is, is, you know, their Association of Idaho Cities is picking, they're picking, they're being strategic with the issues that they choose to focus on in the legislature, recognizing that, you know, there's only so much political capital to expend. And so, given that, you know, it tends to be the large cities that have their issues addressed with AIC's lobbyists. The interests of the resort cities and particularly, you know, this really became obvious to, to us as we were working with the legislature on the local option tax and recognizing that we weren't really able to get any support from AIC in the legislature with this one. And so that, that I think really motivated a lot of the resort cities to start thinking, you know, how can we have a voice at the table in the legislature that will bring forward our interests? And then, you know, ultimately, councilman, it's, you know, it's going to be up to us to, to be explicit about these are the goals that we want addressed in the legislature and that's what we're, that's what we're putting our money towards.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I may be tired, it's been a long day. But I guess I view it as lobbying for, lobbying for us and being that voice that we can't all be down there. So I was really looking for the word against in here, I'm like, I know I'm tired, but I guess I view it as it'll be for us, somebody to stand up for us. And I don't think the idea is to take away any of the short-term rentals or, but that's, that's her, my point of view.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So my question would be, what are the procedures, like who? You're saying us as a city, but would it be all 16 mayors that are going to determine then what this lobbyist is going to work on? And, and I guess I don't have enough detail to understand the premise of what they're doing or if we disagree or agree with them. Does that?
Yeah, fair enough.
It's so general that I don't have enough information to fill. It's so general that I don't have enough information to fill.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
One suggestion that the council may want to consider that other cities do in a situation like this is when a city is considering hiring a lobbyist, going in with other cities to hire a lobbyist, approve a set aside of dollars for that, but contingent upon receiving the agenda in advance that the lobbyist will be pursuing, and that that come back before the, the council, and that that is contingent on the participation of the city in that lobbyist effort would be contingent upon council approval of the lobbying agenda and with regular updates on those efforts and what's happening by the lobbyist presented to council throughout the legislative session.
Thank you, Jennifer, that's a great suggestion. And I, I would be happy, if, if that's satisfactory to the councilwoman, I'd be happy to include that in the motion here as a, as a requirement.
I think that being contingent upon what we're paying for, and then the council can decide whether or not we want to pay for it at that time, but allowing these funds to be put out there, and then we, we agree upon that, I think that's what Jennifer said, that these funds are set aside, and then at a later date, when we know we can approve.
Who we're hiring and for what.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Sorry, long day, can't get it.
Sir, how many cities have voted on this, do you know? Is there, because it says approximately sixteen, I'm assuming they were given the invitation, how many have accepted?
Yeah, so this is all new, we are, I was probably one of the first mayors reached out to by, by Ketchum. So, and this was probably three weeks ago, so, so this is all happening in, in real time. I will say that the legislative session starts here next month, so you know, there's, and, and I'll tell you too, that Ketchum, you know, they're going, they're going forward with this, regardless of who comes along, they, they recognize that the more, the more the merrier, right, the more of a coalition that they can build, the stronger their case, and of course, it stretches everybody's dollars further, right? But they're, they're going to go ahead along with this, you know, regardless of our decision. But, but I, I recognize, and I hope that you do as well, that this is in the best interest of Sandpoint as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to add that it seems like a very small sum, and when we do have an agenda, maybe we choose as a city to think that these are some great things, and there might be more allowance in our budget also, so I think we can withhold as much as we might make a choice to think, wow, we really need this help, this makes sense for Sandpoint.
Thank you for that.
I do appreciate maybe figuring out where the funds are going to go. I have a hard time believing sixteen cities having the same goals, same principles, same beliefs, and it might be where the majority wants this, and we as a council don't agree with that, so.
But, I mean, I can tell you, for instance, one thing that every resort city in Idaho is going to be interested in, and that's protecting the local option tax. I mean, if we can agree on one thing, it would be that. All right. Any other questions? Appreciate the questions. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Luke Omet.
All right.
Good evening to Mr. Mayor, counsel, I would urge you to spend the $2,000, Idaho is sitting on 1.6, a $1.6 billion surplus. These American Rescue Plan funds are a wonderful opportunity as you are faced with looking at sidewalks, streets, water, and other infrastructure. Having a lobbyist down at Boise for this session for a $2,000 fee for the impact that it could have on our city is monumental, and I would please ask for you to seriously consider that for 2,000, the return on investment we could have as this community, thank you.
Appreciate those comments, thank you. Anyone else?
Kristen, did you want to speak on this as well?
Hi again, Kristen Steyker. So I can gather my, my thoughts. You equate Sandpoint with a resort city based on population? And are there any other variables? Because there are a lot.
That's how the state of Idaho defines it.
That's, okay, okay, very good.
Which I know doesn't make sense, but that's what they do.
Yeah, okay, understood. So the, the $2,000 would be coming from ARPA funding?
No, that would be from our general fund.
Okay, how, so it would be up in the air as to whether or not the state ARPA funding would be allocated based on decisions that a lobbyist makes?
Yeah, so I, I think what you're asking is, so the state is making all kinds of decisions, this legislative session, about the ARPA funding and how it can and can't be used, right? So this suggests, this proposal would be for city of Sandpoint to have a representative, a lobbyist, down in the legislature through this session that could lobby on our behalf, that could be our representative through this session, and, and guide those decisions, hopefully, influence legislators who are making those decisions on, on our behalf.
Okay, so conversations between lobbyists and legislators are one of the most behind closed-door conversations that exist. It's not on public record. I, I do agree with Joel that sixteen resort cities, if they were all to combine together, it could actually sink to the lowest common denominator, we don't necessarily know what that is. I don't think there's any transcripts when lobbyists speak to politicians. I would like to point this idea out in contrast to a meeting that I happened to witness, and that was at a city commissioners meeting, standing room only, there were people in the hallway. And it was discussion about ARPA funds. So let's, let's contrast that conversation to a conversation that a lobbyist would have in Boise.
Kristen, you have thirty seconds.
Yeah, so that, that's the long and the short of it. If I may impress upon everyone in the room, and anyone on Zoom, and anyone who may be looking at this on a recording, ARPA funds come with strings attached. It behooves us to know what those strings are, because they do exist, period. Thank you for listening, and Merry Christmas again, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Steyker, appreciate that. Grants do come with strings. Anyone else that would like to comment on this matter from the public? Okay, hearing that, I would entertain a motion to authorize an expenditure of up to $2,000 contingent upon council approval of a future lobbyist agenda to hire a lobbyist for Idaho resort cities and participate in this joint effort, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman McAllister, yes. Councilwoman Groth, yes. Councilwoman Sherman, yes. Councilwoman Darling, no. Councilwoman Sprow.
Again, appreciate comments from you guys, again, well, as a council, again, I'll keep my eyes open and do the best I can in my conscience to see where these funds go and what the strings are attached, so as of right now, yes.
Councilwoman Rule, yes.
Motion passes. The final item on the agenda this evening is an executive session. I will entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section 74-2061F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies not yet being litigated, but imminently likely to be litigated, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, this will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Sherman, yes. Councilwoman Rule, yes. Councilwoman Sprow, yes. Councilwoman Darling, yes. Councilwoman McAllister, yes. Councilwoman Groth, yes.
Motion passes, and thank you to the members of the public who participated this evening, both in person and those participating remotely. The exec, executive session will, will now begin as soon as everyone exits the room. And the Zoom meeting will end, thank you, everyone, good night.